Well, why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order? Could we please take roll call?
North. Preston.
Here.
Brethnack.
Here.
Giff.
Here.
Weiss. Elston.
Here.
Ackley.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Chaney.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
I Gardner. We have a quorum.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is a public meeting which is subject to the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A current copy of that law and the rules and guidelines for this meeting are posted on the north wall of this room, and they're also posted online at the Sarpy County website under the Planning Commission page. This evening, the Sarpy County staff that are with us are Beth Garber, Jose Garcia, Jamie Eastman, Kayla Hathcote, Nicole Spitzemberger, Don Simon, Kelly Jack, and Jason Kubicek. The first item for this evening is approval of the April 19, 2022 Planning Commission minutes. Do we have any comments on that, or would someone care to make a motion to approve?
Sound move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Brett?
Yeah.
So we have a motion by Davis, a second by Brethnack. If there are no further comments, please vote. This evening, under the regular agenda with public hearings, during our regular agenda, I will introduce each case, and then staff will present each detailed application on the agenda and provide a recommended action or actions. After staff has presented a case, they shall open the public hearing process. All individuals who provide testimony shall state their name prior to any testimony. Five minutes are allowed for the applicant or representative of the applicant. A portion of this time may be reserved for other representatives of the applicant. And then five minutes are allowed for a representative of an opponent if there are any. Two minutes are then allowed for any other individuals wishing to speak on a proposed action. After this public testimony, I shall close the public hearing process. The proposed matter may be debated and discussed amongst members of the Planning Commission. Commissioners may question any person without the requirement of rebuttal, and there's no time limit for this discussion. Following the Planning Commission's discussion of the case, I shall ask the Commission what action they wish to take. A recommendation for action from a Planning Commissioner can be to approve, to approve with changes, to disapprove, or to table. Following acceptance of a motion and a second, I will call for a vote of the Commission. Commissioners should vote when called upon. So with that, Agenda Item 1 is Ryan and Vanessa Steele have submitted an application for consideration of a special use permit. The applicants are requesting that this item be tabled indefinitely.
The applicant requested that it be tabled indefinitely because we don't have text amendments for the sports and facilities recreation, sports and recreation facility, sorry, got going fast there. So that's the explanation. If there's any questions, I can answer those.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, would anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion to hold over indefinitely?
Second.
So we've got a motion by Ackley, a second by Giff. If there are no further questions, please vote.
Eight votes for, motion carries.
Agenda Item 2, Allen Hans for Advantage Investment Properties LLC has submitted an application for consideration of rezoning.
Good evening. Allen Hans of Advantage Investment Properties LLC is requesting approval of a rezoning from two-family residential zoning district RD 50 to residential estates to District RE 2 for Lot 40 Villa Springs. The subject property is generally located southeast of 132nd Street and Buffalo Road, and per the attached site plan, existing structures include a woodshed, a coop, and the lot is otherwise maintained lawn. The request is to rezone the property to better align with the size of the property. The site is over 2 acres, which is in compliance with the RE 2 zoning district and is compatible with other RE 2 zoned lots in the immediate area. The applicant wishes to build a single-family dwelling and accessory structure which would be larger than is allowed in the RD 50 zoning district that it currently is, but would comply with the RE 2 regulations. Access to the site is from North Shore Drive. Access to Buffalo Road will not be permitted. The existing structure along Buffalo Road will become a legal non-conforming structure with the approval of the rezoning. And this is the structure I'm talking about there. The structure will be allowed to remain as a non-conforming structure, but if ever 50% destroyed or damaged, it would need to be brought into conformance or rebuilt, when rebuilt. The property is in the floodplain, and any improvement will need to comply with floodplain requirements in the Sarpy County zoning regulations. The applicant has provided a site plan exhibit with a proposed location of a residence and accessory building. Staff recommends approval of a rezoning from two-family residential district RD 50 to residential estates to, on the property legally described as Lot 40 Villa Springs, Sarpy County, Nebraska, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department Recommendation Report. Staff makes this recommendation as the request is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the requirements of the Sarpy County zoning regulations. Let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing and would ask if there's a representative of the applicant who would like to speak.
Hello, I'm Allen Hans. I woke up without a voice, so I apologize for that. As Jason said, basically just changing it to what the neighbors are. I'm not sure how it got zoned RD 50s to RE 2, but it is what it is. I'd like to put up a bigger building than what's allowed. I don't have a problem with the non-conforming structure. It was the neighbor's woodshed, and so it just kind of came with the property, and will most likely tear it down sometime in the future. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak to this this evening? With that, I'd like to close the public hearing and would ask if the Commission has any questions or comments? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will move to recommend approval of rezoning from two-family residential district RD 50 to residential estates to District RE 2 on the property legally described as Lot 40 Villa Springs, Sarpy County, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department Recommendation Report, and based on finding that this recommendation, or this request is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the requirements of the Sarpy County zoning regulations.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Preston, a second by Davis. If there's no further discussion, please vote. Agenda Item 3, Lisa Edmondson and Steve Laramore have submitted applications for rezoning, a preliminary plat, and a final plat.
Thank you, Commissioner Huddleston. Lisa Edmondson and Steve Laramore are requesting approval of a rezoning from agriculture to agricultural development and agricultural residential zoning districts, and also a preliminary and final plat of a subdivision to be known as Big Sky Acres. The property, which is generally located southwest of 84th Street and Platteville Road, has one residence, a single-family residence. It also has three large and nine small accessory agriculture buildings for horse stables and pasture ground contained by rail fencing. The applicant is proposing to divide the property into two lots with the intention of selling Lot 2, shown here to the south, and building a single-family home on Lot 1. Staff has advised the applicant that the existing horse stable on Lot 2 can continue as it is in allowed use in the agricultural development zoning district. At 5.1 acres, Lot 1 will be rezoned to AGR, Agricultural Residential, and Lot 2, being approximately 14.81 acres in size, will be rezoned to AGD, Agricultural Development District. The site is accessible from Platteville Road via a permanent access easement. The applicant is to dedicate 25 feet of right-of-way along the frontage of the lot, which is the western edge of the lot, the western boundary line. Water is provided by a community water well on Lot 2, and easements are in place for Lot 1 to access the existing well. An individual septic currently serves the existing residence, and the property is outside of the Sarpy County and city's wastewater agency growth management zones. The staff has advised the applicant surveyor that corrections will be needed on the exhibits, which will need to be rectified prior to the scheduling of, for the Sarpy County Board of Commissioners' Public Hearing. Staff recommends approval of a rezoning from agricultural farming to agricultural development district and agricultural residential district on the subject property for the lots, for the subdivision to be known as Lot 1 and Lot 2 Big Sky Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department Recommendation Report. Staff also recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat of the subdivision to be known as Outlots 1 and 2 Big Sky Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department Recommendation Report, as the proposal is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations. Staff makes these recommendations as the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and meets the Sarpy County zoning regulations. Let me know if you have any questions about that.
Excuse me, why did, did we ask for the name Outlots, or?
We don't have Outlots on this one.
Right, but why name the lots Outlot 1 and Outlots 1 and 2?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're.
Jan, it should be Lots.
Lots.
Did I have Outlots?
That's correct.
Okay, it's all right. Thank you.
Is it on the exhibit? I'm sorry, did I say it?
It's in the recommendation.
It's in the, oh, my fault.
It says Outlots.
For the preliminary final plat.
Thank you.
Gosh, yeah, good catch.
Good catch.
Lots, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? With that, I'd like to open the public hearing and would ask if there's a representative
Good evening. My name's Dennis Whitfield, and I'm the professional land surveyor that's representing the applicant tonight. I believe everything's pretty straightforward, as Mr. Kubicek presented, but there was, there is one issue that I would like to bring to light to the Commission, and that is the 25-foot dedicated right-of-way. Currently, this property and several properties to the south in Dons and Roses addition utilize that easement that Mr. Kubicek mentioned, the 66-foot ingress/egress easement for that travel. At my research, at the county surveyor's office and the county engineer's office, we do not believe that the county has a right to require a dedicated right-of-way on private ground using an easement. Their comment to me was that the county can only require a public right-of-way on a section line road, which is your north-south-east-west lines of a section, or a road that has went, a county road that has went through the formal process of a petition and is entered into the county road records. So that is the only change that we would be requesting to what has been submitted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else who would care to speak to this matter this evening? Please come forward, and if you wouldn't mind, just put your name there and state
My name's Gary Slyve. I'm directly south of this property that's being discussed. I've just got a couple of concerns on the use of the property. The 5 acres that is being sectioned off for the residential is fine, but we're concerned about a culvert that empties out into that 5 acres. It's a natural waterway that comes across the property. Few years ago, the owner backed it up with horse manure, and it caused the road flood over onto our lane, and the lane is used by seven neighbors, including Steve and Lisa. And we want to make sure that the culvert is taken care of and that the waterway that goes through this property is also contained so that we don't have a flooding problem that goes over our lane as we drive down it to get to our homes. The second concern on this is that for the lot number one, that is going to be converted over to the new owners. At this time, they have dumped tree debris already before the purchasing of this property. They've also stockpiled two large dirt piles that were to be used for the horse dry lots to take care of some erosion problems that were taken care of in this sale. At that time, when they brought in the dirt, nobody was notified, at least I was not notified, that there would be over 22 side dumps come down our lane and dump this dirt into the pastures, and some of it's on the 5 acres that is in question here. Now, we have an email from the people that dumped this saying they are going to remove it again, and this is going to take several days for them to remove this dirt. And the reasoning behind it is they're saying now that the dirt they brought in had too many rocks in it, and it's hard on the horses. And I have horses too, so I understand that rocks are bad, but these are big rocks. And if they brought the dirt in to begin with, with rocks in it, why are they having to take it out now? I know that has no bearing on this, but it's just concerns on the usage of this, because there is a lot of tree debris because of the people that are buying this thing, is a company that does grading. So that's my concerns, and I'm backed up by my neighbors behind me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak to this matter this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and would ask the Commissioners if you have any additional questions? If there was someone who wanted to speak, I can reopen the public hearing. Okay, I think we're good. Any additional questions or discussion from the Commission?
I guess question for Nicole or Kayla. Is there, there was a request from the applicant not to dedicate the right-of-way on a private easement. I don't know if that had come up previous to now, or?
No, I mean, we can require right-of-way dedication. I don't think that has anything to do with the private easement. The easement would still exist.
We can't hear in the back. We can't hear.
They can't. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll just repeat my comment. The county can require right-of-way dedication. The easement would still exist. I believe it's in the subdivision regulations, and I was looking for it, the specific section, and I can't find it. But the comment that we can only require right-of-way dedication along such a section line roads is not accurate, because this body has required dedications as part of other plats, so I'm not sure.
So basically, the right-of-way is only on the individual parcel being replatted. To the extent the county ever wanted the road, they would have to basically buy the road. In other words, because it is a private easement.
If we did not require the right-of-way dedication here in the future, yes, the county would, if the county wanted to install a road there, then the county would have to pay for it.
So without the owner of the road that granted the easement, this applicant, I don't think, can grant right-of-way over a road it doesn't own. That's probably one of the.
What was the question?
Whether the applicant can actually grant right-of-way on a road it does not own, which I think that's probably another issue that we actually would need the owner of the road to sign off on the.
And that depends on if the easement runs with the owner of the land. I guess, and to be honest, I've not had a chance to review the easement document. So that would be a question we need to resolve. Because I see what you're saying now about the, whether or not we purchase it over the easement document. I don't have an answer, because I don't think this has come up before, and I don't think we can make a specific determination about that piece of it without looking at the easement document.
If we make a recommendation tonight, subject to that being clarified, are you comfortable that the answer to the right-of-way question could be figured out before it goes to the board?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah. I mean, either it's going to have a real clear answer, or it's going to have not a specific answer, and so then we would just go for, you know, my recommendation is usually the most conservative route, just to make sure that the county's protected. But I believe that the recommendation from the Planning Department to dedicate the right-of-way is pursuant to one of the requirements in the subdivision regulations, and I'll see if I can find that. But I've also heard comments that, you know, the county may not, just because you dedicate, excuse me, just because the road, the right-of-way is dedicated, doesn't mean it would be a county road, so. Does anyone have questions?
Can you refresh with what are, what are the regulations as far as having a public right-of-way to a platted lot, as far as the subdivision regulations are concerned? Does every lot that's platted have to have furniture on public right-of-way?
That's what I was looking for, and I haven't, it's, I recall there's something in the regulations stating very specific language to that, and I haven't had a chance to find it before coming up here. You got it?
Okay.
Is it on the, on here?
Yeah, I got it in here.
Is this in the comp plan, or is this the?
That's in the subdivision regulations.
Okay, so, okay. So this is in the subdivision regulations here. Every lot shall abut or have access to a public street. So technically, it does have access to a public street via the permanent easement, although I haven't had a chance to look at the easement document, so we'll just assume it, but it does not, it does not abut the public street.
Do we know how wide the easement is as compared to the right-of-way we're requesting? And again, the reason I'm thinking about that is we're going to need the owner of the road, I think, to actually dedicate the right-of-way for the roadway strip. The owner can only dedicate to the extent part of that right-of-way is touching his land, I believe.
Tom, I mean, looking at this drawing, and maybe this sheds light on the question, it looks like the easement is 66 foot wide, of which, if I'm reading this plat correctly, the west 50 foot is not on lots 1 or 2. Is that correct? So the only, there's only 16 feet of the easement that will exist on lots 1 and 2 when this, when and if this plat was approved?
Answer that.
Of the existing permanent easement?
The, one of the corrections that I requested was to do 25 feet of right-of-way rather than 50 feet of right-of-way, because we'll get 25 from him and 25 from the opposite owner.
What I'm asking though is, is there not already 66 foot of easement?
It doesn't follow the same lot line as, it doesn't say, follow the lot line. It's close, but it's not the same. It's off. I don't have the document. It wasn't a part of the exhibits at the time of submittal, so I don't have the document comparing the easement to the right-of-way. It's, some of it may overlap, but it's not exact. The easement kind of meanders a slight, a little slight bit, as opposed to the actual lot lines.
Jason, do we have a, an aerial photo that we could, when I look at the one that we have, we need to blow it up so we can at least see what we're talking about?
Do you want a GIS, or?
Yeah, yes.
What do you got?
You're going to have to blow it up.
This kind of gives us a little bit of a, you can kind of see how that road meanders a little bit. This isn't the best, but it kind of gives us an idea.
Sir, if you would hold up, we've closed the public hearing. Staff and the commissioner are discussing the matter.
Actually, let me do one more thing here. Yeah. lot line is. So the, the road and what I assume is the easement goes off-center of the lot lines.
The plat indicates the easement is not centered on the lot line. It's entirely on this lot, isn't it?
That's what, if that's what was given to us as the easement, then I'm not sure if the road was not built on the road. Is that, can Denny testify towards that? If the easement lines up with the right-of, or the actual road?
Do you have a copy of the easement with you, Mr. Whitfield?
I do. Can I approach the bench?
You may. We're not in court, but you may approach the podium for sure.
Again, Dennis Whitfield, granted, these were late-breaking requests that Mr. Kubicek had made. I do, I made copies. We went out the other day, and we actually shot the location of that road, which is similar to the map, and I have some copies here if you'd like to see it.
I would.
Can I get some clarification on late-breaking requests? What do you mean by that?
The revisions that needed to be made to the plat and the preliminary plat.
Uh-huh.
And then I submitted those two days ago and three days ago. So it was information that Mr. Kubicek required the changes, changes be made, and I had made those and submitted them, but timing just didn't allow it to get updated into the meeting.
Okay. Perfect.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
So clarification, the easement, and I've got a copy of the easement back in my packet. The easement is 66 feet east of the west property line. So it's the west 66 feet of the original tax lot is the easement.
And we're asking for a 25-foot public road right-of-way dedication off of the west lot line?
Correct. And that 25-foot line is drawn on that new drawing.
The existing gravel road, that's been used for how long?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Am I allowed to make some other clarifications while I'm here? Do we have to wait till the meeting's closed, or...
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. One, one other part of my research was talking to Mr. Pat Sullivan, who is the attorney that represents the applicants, and I think there was a question about the easement and the right-of-way. And his statement was, even though the right-of-way would be dedicated, the easement still continues. So that seems flourishant, that we continue under the easement operation due to the road location. Because the county's not going to come out and move that road over into this 25-foot dedicated area. The county's not going to come out and maintain that 25-foot road.
So to the extent that the owner is dedicating, it's actually all land?
That's farmed by the neighbor.
All on land that they own?
They own, and it's farmed by the neighbor across the road to the west.
Okay. That helps. I assumed we were looking at an easement that would straddle a boundary line.
One other statement. When Dunza Roses III was established, which is south, there was an additional 33-foot right-of-way put on the west side of that property line. So now there's 99-foot easement through there, but only the east side of the property line is being used on the applicant's property. And I've got one other comment with regards to the, all lots must, must abut a, a public street. That is in Section 10, and the exact title of Section 10 is Minimum Design Standards of Subdivisions. That is more along the lines where you're creating a new subdivision. You are doing design work for road layout, streets, things like that. Here again, this is a unique opportunity. I don't think it falls under design standards to be dedicating a road right-of-way.
But we are doing a subdivision of land, so...
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. But it's under the design standards.
Okay. If, if we, and Jason, this is maybe a question for you. If you, if we recommend foregoing the 25-foot because of the existing gravel road, does that not mean that that building setback line has to move back also?
The building setback would need to match where the lot line ends up.
Oh, not the lot line, not the road?
The, the lot line, yeah. The lot line is where the building setback starts. So if we're dedicating right-of-way, it starts at the edge of the 25 feet, but if we're not dedicating right-of-way, it starts at the lot line.
But from a practical matter, if, this reminds me of when I had to put a four-foot fence around one of my properties on the corner, although, and the reason for that is so that you don't limit sight, and the fence was not going to go that far, I still had to put in a four-foot fence versus a six-foot fence. Would you not have to move that building back for sight?
This isn't a public road, so site triangle requirements wouldn't apply here.
Makes sense on a private road.
It's a private road, and it's, it sounds like the road might not be quite right on the easement either, so it's, I think that's a matter for the home builder.
I've got a question for legal. I think back in the 90s, I worked on a roadway project, and an adjacent developer had some kind of agreement worked out with the city of La Vista, where when the city came forward with their roadway project, which was widening, the developer agreed to dedicate right-of-way. So it was, there was a, there was an agreement to dedicate right-of-way, but the trigger was the roadway project, and the dedication didn't happen until later. Is that something that can be done in this instance?
Yeah, I don't think Public Works is, has any immediate plans, or even in the near-future plans, to improve that roadway at all. So that would make sense in this circumstance, is to require that trigger at a future date as part of a subdivision agreement. I mean, it's, it's possible to do that.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Did you have another?
I don't know that it's a legal one, but as far as what's there now, that gentleman says he has the easement. Does that easement serve that whole cluster of houses, or what's the scope of that easement?
That, that, I think, someone who has the easement probably is better able to answer the question. But as far as the map goes, I understand there's the roadway, there's the easement, and then there's the dedication. It's not clear to me if the roadway is actually included in the easement, or if it's, you know, roads jog after a number of years, so...
My question is, is, are all those homes served by the same easement, and it's essentially a private road?
Yes.
And you guys all maintain it?
Yes.
Well, not the county, is my point, right? And are there other areas within there that have been dedicated, or would you be the only one that would have dedicated?
This would be the only one.
Okay.
This, this is a copy of the Dunza Rosa plat. Our subject property sits right in here. And the 33-foot right-of-way is on the east side of the main tax lot property line, and it goes all the way south down into the Dunza Roses. And there's the 33-foot additional on the west side of the tax lot property lines that goes down and services the Dunza Roses lots that were on the west side of the tax lot property line. So your answer is yes, all the lots to the south are serviced by that easement.
That easement.
One more concern. If we dedicate 25-foot public right-of-way here, it's still not a public right-of-way to get to Platteview Road.
So your easement stops short of...
Yeah. This, there's, there's two tax lots here. There's a 20-acre tax lot, and then the applicant's 20-acre tax lot. So if we dedicate a 25-foot right-of-way here...
Oh, okay.
Technically, we won't have public right-of-way.
The same document gets you to the, the right-of-way, or is there another?
I'm sorry?
The same easement document gets all those homes to a public street?
That's correct.
One document.
Not a public street, an ingress-egress easement.
To Platteview Road, which is a public street.
To Platteview.
Yeah. But I want to address that we do this on every plat. We, we always dedicate right-of-way on, to get that, that public street frontage, and we have, I have examples of other floating right-of-way that we've done in the past year or two, and we have others, so we've always done it that way. I, I would say always with the caveat of, there was a certain point in tart, a certain point in time where we started, because obviously we didn't do it when that was done. But, but kind of playing catch-up, and that's kind of the name of the game on, on, on something like this, so...
I will agree. We've got a unique opportunity here.
One more, is, so the existing private road is on that easement area?
The existing private road, well, as you saw in the aerial, it's all on the west...
But is it on, covered under that easement? Do you have your road located on your easement area?
Yes. Yes.
And the publicly dedicated right-of-way that's being sought would not necessarily align with the road or the easement?
If you look at my document, the northern part of that 25-foot dedicated public right-of-way is not even within the traveled gravel roadway.
So if the county wanted to make a road there, they'd have to choose to put the road on the line and ignore the existing road and easement, or they would just take the existing road?
It was suggested at one point to me that we could follow with right-of-way along the existing easement, but I, I saw the issue with leaving a gap. You know, if we only dedicate 25 in that area, there would be a gap in land in between the property line and, and some of those spots. So I don't think that would work well.
There's no scenario realistically where you would continue south, right?
No scenario in the future where we develop? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, that road's going to dead-end?
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean, that's why we dedicate right-of-way on those areas. I, I wouldn't say, never say never.
Well, yeah.
For sure.
But you have...
You're talking to the south?
Yeah. You, you have other north-south...
Connections down to the south, like we, like down, if you go another... Well, so we, I showed a diagram quickly from the comprehensive plan that says it's a quarter-mile access policy, where we, every quarter mile, we ask for three streets, if possible, you know, in those areas where it makes sense, and the access points are on every quarter-mile section. So that's what we're asking for, is every quarter mile, and that's in the comprehensive plan.
Could you pull up that aerial again, please?
Okay.
No, that's fine. Just zoom out a little bit.
Okay. Do you want that up?
Nope, nope, that's perfect. Okay.
Okay.
With regard to the quarter mile, the road is on a 16th line, not a half-mile, a half-mile or quarter. Well, excuse me, the 16th would be the quarter. My fault. That's correct. So it is on a 16th line, which would be the quarter. But then one more comment, just for the commission. In discussing this with Sarpy County Engineer Denny Wilson, now he has a concern, because Platteview Road is under design, and now he has a question on where they're going to put the lug-out for this road. So things might be changing down the road when they develop Platteview Road. That lug-out might go over to the quarter section line and beyond the property line.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything back regarding that issue, so I don't know.
So just general knowledge down the road. Any other questions?
So what, what I don't see on this newest exhibit, we're showing, you've got the 25-foot showing on there for the right-of-way strip. You've got in red the existing gravel road. Looking at the original plat, it looks like there's 66-foot of easement, which, that easement would start at that northwest corner of this most recent plat, if I'm correct. So it would go from that corner east, 66 feet?
Yes. There should be a line.
So what we don't see on here is the 66-foot line for the easement.
There should, there's a line there for the 66-foot easement.
There is?
Yes. There isn't?
No, not on the one you just handed out. It's got the 70-foot moving setback.
I wasn't aware that this was going to be your preliminary plat, revised one, so I didn't bring it, but...
Okay.
It wasn't me.
What we would end up with, as I mentioned, if the right-of-way is dedicated, the 66-foot easement remains in effect. It does not go away. So there would be, from the west property line, there'd be 25-foot of dedicated right-of-way, and then there'd be an additional 41 feet of ingress-egress easement. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Essentially, I mean, the, if the gravel road, easement road doesn't move at all, the property owners submitting the plat, they really don't get affected at all as far as what they use. The thing that's being acquired is some of the, some of the land, the 25-foot on the west side of the existing gravel road, not on the east side. Is that right?
Correct.
And that 66-foot wide easement, that road can be built anywhere within that 66-foot. So even though it curves around through there a little bit, it's still within the 66-foot.
That's correct. Thank you, Commissioner.
On a slightly different topic, Mr. Slyff mentioned an issue with a culvert and then some haul-in of soil and rock. That's not really something that our commission deals with. Do we have some advice we could give him as to who to reach out to? Is that a private matter?
It, it's possibly something we could look at in the subdivision agreement, to require a plan of some sort for a culvert and a proposed, you know, siding of the house, that sort of thing. So I think we can, we can discuss that, or if it, if it wants, if you want to make it a condition, it can be dealt with in the subdivision agreement. That's how we would probably go for it.
Okay. Wouldn't the maintenance on that culvert and the flow of the water underneath the easement road be something that's, should be addressed in the easement document itself and agreed to by the property owners that use it?
If the culvert goes within that easement, yeah. They might have to be a privy to the subdivision agreement. Is that what you're, the, the easement owners?
No. What I'm saying is, is the fact that there's, the fact that this is an easement road in the first place and not a public street, the fact that the culvert may have some issues, is that necessarily something that we even have any... some issues, is that necessarily something that we even have any control over?
Yeah, I'd have to kind of see where the culvert's at. In this case, it's a new issue for me. I didn't, I'm not familiar with it backing up. I had heard about the dirt piles, but hadn't heard about the culvert backing up.
But if it was a public street, then I think the county becomes responsible for keeping that culvert open and maintained. But it's not a public street.
Not a public street.
Right.
Let me clarify. Not all, just like any other plat that comes before you, even though, like in just the regular subdivisions, I mean, larger subdivisions, all those streets are dedicated to the public, but they're not necessarily county roads until the county actually takes action. Yeah. So in this case, if it's dedicated right-of-way, it wouldn't necessarily be a public street, a public county street. So just to clarify that.
But depending on where that culvert is, we'd have to identify, you know, where it is, why it's backing up, you know, if that's a risk. If it's going to be affected by the construction, then maybe we... I'd have to see kind of where that culvert is. But it sounded like, yeah, I don't want to dissect it here, I guess.
Any other questions or discussion? Anyone care to make a motion?
I guess I have a question for Nicole. If somebody likes Mr. Huddleston's idea of making the right-of-way dedication contingent upon a county road plan in the future that triggers it, how would we do that?
We would put it in the subdivision agreement, then we'd probably also add some kind of a deed restriction or a deed, we'd file it with the plat. Or I haven't quite thought through that, but I think it needs to be, in addition to a subdivision agreement, it would need to be filed with, somehow filed and documented with the register of deeds. So whether we put that on the plat, or as a note, or some other additional document, or maybe we just file a subdivision agreement with the register of deeds against that lot, and maybe that's enough. I think there's ways to do it, I just haven't thought through the best way.
Are there cons to that thought process that I'm missing?
One of the cons might be that building setback, because you're building, if somebody puts up a structure now, you're building it based on the property line, and now you're turning around and add right-of-way in here later, and now the building's too close to the road.
Which all the rest of the buildings up and down that are going to have the same problem, possibly.
And I'm all for getting right-of-way, when you do these subdivision, dedicated right-of-way, it's a lot easier in the future to develop something with right-of-way than an easement. Easements are messy. In this situation, though, we're kind of late to the game here. It's developed, there's a private road agreement, it's serving these families or these houses. And then to require a dedication of a parcel that isn't even on the existing road and not know what that road's going to look like when they get around to doing it, I think you're just kind of cluttering up the property in anticipation that the road's going to be on that line. I don't know if that's going to happen. I kind of like your idea about the wait-and-see, I think. Generally, you want the dedication. Here is, there are some unique facts.
I agree with what you're saying, except that never does not always mean never. And then if 20 years from now, they need to put that street through because somebody's putting in a bigger subdivision, then, you know, here we are trying to negotiate for land for an easement. So to have it be implemented, if the county does it, I'm certainly in favor of that.
Well, I think in that scenario, they, you know, they'd have one check here if they got this, however many feet dedicated. They'd still have everyone else to go and either try to make a deal with or take their property.
That's one less.
It is one less, but yeah.
So I would favor that it not be implemented until the county did something, or if the county did something.
Jason, can you jump on an aerial that's got zoning to the south?
Is that what you want to see? Am I telling you?
Where on the other side?
A little better?
It's all still ag to the south?
AGR, you know, transitional ag-type zoning districts. Those are all, where my mouse is, those are all AGR. This is ag. This is ag. Guess that's ag, yeah. EGD over here.
So the other road issue in the future, they're going to want to come in from the east or the west as well, if they develop further south. And here's another twist. You can about bet that easement gives rights to these lots, not the land of the south.
But at the time, somebody would develop the land of the south, they'll require them to dedicate it. If they want a road to go through.
How can... You can't dedicate unless they go take it. Yeah. No, what I'm saying, these next chunk of land to the south might not have legal rights to use that ingress egress easement.
Well, they don't. They'd have to negotiate that.
Yeah.
If the easement, the right-of-way and the road were aligned here, I think the right-of-way dedication is, you know, we got to do it. Here, you're getting a right-of-way dedication that isn't on the existing road, and it's one parcel among how many others? I don't know if that's the most prudent thing to do. What if you put the road somewhere else? Somebody would be back here vacating it then, right? Well, we can make a motion to approve. Approve with changes. Disapprove or table.
Rezoning doesn't have anything to do with the dedication, so...
That's three we got to do.
And we've got three separate items. Would anyone care to make a motion on the rezoning?
I can do that. I recommend that the planning commission, or excuse me, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of rezoning from agricultural farming district AG to agricultural development district AGD and agricultural residential district AGR on the property legally described as tax lot 9A in the east half of the northwest quarter of section 22, township 13 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the subdivision to be known as lots 1 and 2 Big Sky Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning commission, or excuse me, in the planning department recommendation report, because the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the Sarpy County zoning regulations.
We have a second?
Second.
Who's second? Brethnok?
Yep.
So we have a motion by Davis, a second by Brethnok. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Eight votes for, motion carries.
Would anyone care to make a motion on the preliminary plat?
I'll just make a friendly reminder that it's lots, not outlots, per Jan's comment when we make that motion.
I'll make a motion. First, some commentary. I guess I'm not offended by the right-of-way dedication on this, simply because if it never comes about with a road, it's never going to be used. And if it does come about, we've just saved the county, which is all of us taxpayers, the money from having to condemn to obtain it or do eminent domain. So with that in mind, I recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the subdivision to be known as lots 1 and 2 Big Sky Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning department recommendation report, as the proposal is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Ackley, a second by Giff. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Are we taking bets?
Seven votes for, one against. That's Whitfield, motion carries.
And then I would make a recommendation for approval of the final plat of the subdivision to be known as lots 1 and 2 Big Sky Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning department recommendation report, as the proposal is consistent with Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Ackley, a second by Giff. No further discussion, please vote.
Seven votes for, one against. Whitfield, motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item four. Mark and Kimberly Schulting have submitted applications for consideration of rezoning, a preliminary plat, and a final plat.
Okay. Mark and Kimberly Schulting are requesting approval of a rezoning from agricultural and agricultural development district and residential estates 2 to agricultural residential district and residential estates 2, and preliminary and final plat of a subdivision to be known as Cade Acres. The subject property is generally located northwest of 180th Street and Buffalo Road. The existing condition of the site is farmland with 11 agricultural structures and a small stream-fed pond. The applicant is proposing five buildable lots for single-family homes and six non-buildable lots for future development and drainage easements. All lots will have access from Cade Street via 180th Street, and each proposed lot abuts dedicated right-of-way. The proposed, the proposal extends the right-of-way for Cade Street to the west property line and dedicates 25 feet of right-of-way along the west property line, which is a quarter-section line. Outlot A includes 50 feet along the property line for a future dedicated right-of-way once the outlot is dedicated. Sarpy County Public Works will not be responsible for maintenance or improvement of any roadway as a result of this development, whether it is dedicated right-of-way or not. The proposed plat provides non-buildable outlots to meet the 60% set aside for future development as required by the build-through overlay district. An exception request will be submitted to the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency by the Sarpy County Planning Department, which, if granted, would allow individual septic systems for lots 1 through 5 and a lower per-lot fee for sewer connection. Staff has provided the applicant surveyor with comments from planning and public works, which will need to be completed prior to scheduling for the Sarpy County Board of Commissioners public here, yeah, public hearing, sorry. Staff recommends approval of a rezoning from agricultural farming district and agricultural development district and residential estates 2 to agricultural residential and residential estates 2 on the property legally described, lots 4, 5, 6, and 7, and outlot A, Schulting Estates, Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the subdivision to be known as lots 1 through 5, and outlots A through F, Cade Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning department recommendation report. Staff also recommends approval of a preliminary and final plat of the subdivision to be known as lots 1 through 5 and outlots A through F, Cade Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning department recommendation report, as the proposal is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations. Let me know if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? With that, I'd like to open a public hearing, and I would ask if there's a representative of the applicant?
Sorry, your bad penny rolled back to the podium. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Kubicek and his department for helping us in working through this plat. This plat started at Schulting Estates, and it was not very well set up for development and use of the ag land. So when the applicants purchased the ground, I don't know, a year and a half ago or so, they invited me to help them to kind of rearrange it so it was more developable and the ag land was usable. So like I mentioned, Mr. Kubicek's department, we went through about three different lot layouts to get to where we are now. The original plat even had some errors in it that the planning department has since wondered how it even got approved. So we've cleaned up two issues with replating these lots in Schulting Acres, now to be Cade Acres, or Cade Acres? Schulting Estates and Cade Acres. So are there any questions on the preliminary or final plat?
Don't see any at this time. You might get called back up, though.
Thank you. I know the path.
You might sit in the front row. Is there anyone else who would care to speak to this matter this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and would ask the commission if you have any other questions or discussion? Or if anyone would care to make a motion? We've got, again, three items to consider.
I guess I have a question again. This comes back to the roads again. As far as access, first of all, the quarter-section, quarter-section line and the 25-foot of dedication. So is 25-foot apparently adequate instead of 33-foot?
Yeah, local road on our subdivision agreement asks for 25 feet.
And then?
Our subdivision regulations, I said subdivision.
With access to lots 1, 4, and 5, we're dedicating right-of-way, but is there a road?
Let me get the...
And what is the access to those three lots?
The, what you said, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5? Yeah.
No, 1, 4, and 5. I mean, 2 and 3, I can see are going to have access via Cade, but 1, 4, and 5 have frontage on a 25-foot dedicated right-of-way, which could be a cornfield for all I know.
Yeah, currently, it is more of agriculture land, but it would, it's been expressed that that would be utilized as a road for access to those lots.
that would be utilized as a road for access to those lots along the west property line. And no other access easement has been discussed at this point. We had discussed it at one point, but it was removed.
So does that come into the subdivision agreement where they have to construct that road?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah.
So there physically will be access to these other three lots?
Yep. And if it wasn't clear, this north property line is a section line, so that's why it's 50 feet on one side.
Jason, I have a question about the sewer on this one. Let me see if I can find. Sorry, let me just...
Excuse me, sorry.
The part about it, that they currently are using septic, and so what about the septic fees, and the others are proposed to be septic? Is that for an interim measure?
Yes, exactly. This is in the Sarpy County and Cities Wastewater Agency area, the growth management zones. So I am going to submit a, an app, I'm going to submit to the Sarpy County and Cities Wastewater Agency an exception request to allow for temporary individual septic for the, for each lot, and each lot would also then pay a lower fee for sewer connection, based on their exception request process.
So...
And I have already kind of talked with the Sarpy and County Cities. They've actually were the ones that suggested the easements for in the red and the blue, well, the red, and then also up to the north on that side.
Okay, so then, when the sewer goes through, they would have to hook up?
Yeah.
Okay, but by paying the lower rate, putting in septic now, they would not, or they wouldn't have to pay another connection fee later?
Not for these lots. For the outlots, there will, there will be fees based upon the acres on those. So those will be, and those are the, those are part of the 60-foot, or 60% set aside for build-through overlay, and so those will be assessed at the time of development, when those go.
Okay. So how much of a reduction do they get per lot?
I'm gonna...
Are you speaking?
Yeah, I'll give you a general number, because I don't remember the exact, but it's around $4,300 a lot.
As compared to...
As compared to $21,000 an acre.
Okay.
And those are round numbers, for sure.
Sure, got it. Okay. And then, any idea when that would be coming through their area? I mean, do we even talk about that?
We wouldn't have any idea at this point when, when that's going to happen. I do think it's quite a ways out, though.
Okay.
And so, you know, one of the considerations was, it has, the three-acre lot sizes is acceptable to have individual septic or individual water, but one of them has to be community, so it sounds like they're going to go with community water instead of in community septic. But being so far out, I think we'll be okay with that.
Okay. Thank you.
So for the record, so where do we, where do we start drawing the line on the exceptions? You know, we got the rule, now we have exceptions, but so where's that blurry line start, or where, how do we determine that?
For the agency?
Well, yeah, the agency and our recommendations. You know, I mean, we, we have a policy that, you know, says that these properties are in the basin, and they, they are subject to the fees unless you get an exception.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to this case, because there is an exception request process, and there are only certain items that you would want to give into exception requests. So it's basically, if it's under three acres or over 20 acres, there is an exception request process for those. So since these are three and under, we can request to have the exception made. But if, you know, yeah, that, I can only speak to this one. There is a policy within their policies and procedure, procedures that talks about what exception requests are likely to be granted. And so this follows that.
And if by chance, we were to move this forward, and then they turned around and didn't grant the exception, then where are we?
I've already done some poking around, and I think we're going to be good on this one. We've already done three or four of them, almost exactly like this. So if, if we don't get accept, if we don't get approval of it, then we'll, then we'll have to go back to the drawing board on it.
And it wouldn't go to county, to the county?
Yeah, we're going to have to get that exception request before.
Before it goes to county?
It, it does, in the past, similar ones, I've had, they're administratively approved, so it happens a lot quicker than a, a board meeting once a month.
Thank you. Would anyone care to make a motion on the rezoning?
I'll make a motion. So staff recommends approval of a rezoning from agricultural farming district ag, agricultural development district AGD, and residential estate RE2 to agricultural residential AGR and residential estates 2 RE2. On the property legally described lots 4, 5, 6, 7, and outlot A, Schulting Estates, Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the subdivision to be known as lot 1 through 5, and outlots A through F, Cade Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning department recommendation report. Staff makes this recommendation as the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the Sarpy County zoning regulations.
So we have a motion by Chaney, a second by Ackley. If there's no further discussion, please vote. I lost my connection, but I...
How would you like to vote?
I vote for.
That's eight votes for. Motion carries.
Would someone care to make a motion on the preliminary plat?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of the subdivision to be known as lot 1 through 5 and outlots A through F, Cade Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning department recommendation report, as the proposal is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations.
We have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ackley, a second by Chaney. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
I vote for.
Eight votes for. Motion carries.
And finally, I'd make a motion for approval of the final plat of the subdivision to be known as lots 1 through 5 and outlots A through F, Cade Acres, subject to the comments and attachments in the planning department recommendation report, as this proposal is consistent with Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations.
We have a second?
Second, Preston.
We got a motion by Ackley, a second by Preston. Please vote.
I vote for.
Eight votes for. Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item five. Richard and Mary Reinicki have submitted applications for rezoning, a preliminary plat, and a final plat. The applicants have requested that this item be tabled to the June 21, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the agenda item number five for a preliminary and final plat of Reinicki Acres be tabled until June 21, 2022.
I'll second. So we've got a motion by Whitfield, a second by Giff. Please vote.
I vote for.
Eight votes for. Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda items with public hearings this evening on the correspondence agenda. Are there any commissioner reports? Is there a planning department report?
Got a couple items. Windgender OWAS replat of the outlots near Hanson Lake passed today in county board. Sunset Meadows replat passed earlier this month in, from county board as well. I believe that was at the end of last month, actually. And then, an announcement today at county board, Don Simon was approved as the, the new planning director for the county.
Congratulations.
So Donna was there in support as well. It's good. So that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Our next meeting is June 21. Do we have any sense as to the, the applications, the number?
We'll have that Reinicki one, since it's been tabled, and then we are, we might have another one as well. We're working on that one. Not 100% on it yet.
Okay.
So we will have a meeting.
All right. Well, unless there's anything else, I believe we should adjourn the meeting.
Okay. We all agree.
Nope, just walk away. Walk away.